All right, we'll start with our review of our budget. Tonight, we have Mayor Cognetti, Eileen Cipriani, Chief John Judge, Matthew Dominus, and Chief Thomas Carroll. Mayor, we will begin with you.
Thank you, Council President Smurl. Wanted to just do an overview that surrounds out the series of budget hearings for the 2026 budget. So we'll just go over a few highlights, and then we'll hear from Chief Carroll for the Police Department and Chief Judge for the Fire Department. Excellent. Okay, this is magically happening without me. All right, good. Good, I'm good. So as you all know, there's no tax increase in this budget. We've continued to provide excellent and increasingly great services in the city while living within our means, which we're very proud of and is a testament to all the department heads and to the management and financial management of Matt Dominus and Eileen Cipriani. So we're appreciative to their continued work to make sure that we meet those goals of just really providing everything that cities should provide, providing it well, paying people well, but then also making sure that we are being good stewards of the taxpayers and not increasing costs on them. Part of that management is not having a TRAN. Again, that's saving us about $100,000 in fees that we don't have to put out because we don't need that financing in the front end of the year. We continue to be really excited about the capital budget. I think it's much more clear for us as an administration, our department heads, for you all at council and for the public, what our investments are in each department and what they look like across the next five years. Being able to fund a capital budget with a dedicated line item in our budget is really been something that, right now probably, and then as we head into future budget years, seems simple, but there was a tremendous amount of work on Matt's part, on Eileen's part, on a lot of departments apart, and you guys, you know, a lot of different legislation that went through over the course of that process. But it's really exciting to be able to see for real what those investments look like. On the healthcare front, we continue to work to make sure that we have the best healthcare that we can possibly have in our organization. We'll note that our prescription drug costs did increase pretty dramatically this year. That was the case across industries and both governments and private businesses. That's kind of a national trend. But again, it makes it clear why we have to continue to work to contain those healthcare costs. And on the interest earnings, we continue to make money on our money, which is great. 2024, $1.3 million in interest earnings and continue to look at almost $1 million in interest earnings, we think, in 2026. So again, just great management on the part of our team in the finance office. On the public safety front, it's important to note that, remember, because we have the capital budget, the investments that we're making in our different departments are both the operating budget and the capital budget. So it's now that we have those two pieces in the capital budget is as robust as it is, it's important to make sure that we're adding the capital budget in a year for a police department or a fire department or a DPW on to what that operating budget looks like. And so we continue to invest in our public safety departments. The police budget will increase by 6% in this 2026 document. Fire will increase by 4%. So you'll see that because you need to put the capital budget and the operating budget side by side. On the DPW front, and I'd say code enforcement and DPW are also public safety departments. Safer streets remains a huge focus for us and something that we've been focused on. We've spent $27 million in street safety through the paving projects and all the different changes that we've made to make our pave cut program better, to make our pothole filling better, the pothole reporter, and then, of course, the $15 million that will go into Streetscapes next year. As we look to 2026, we really want to make sure that we're continuing to focus on the corridors as well. You guys have signed off on grants that we've put in for on Pittston Avenue multiple times, haven't had success yet, but we'll keep doing our best to get funding to invest on those main arteries outside of the downtown Pittston Main Ave. We've got some of those intersections where we've gotten grants and we're working on intersection improvements. You all know that these intersections and these Streetscapes are so expensive, but we'll keep working on North Main, we'll keep working on Pittston. Green Ridge, there's the big bridge project, and we've been working on the crosswalks and different school zones. We also want Green Ridge to be a safer corridor. So a lot of work in the future, a lot of work that we need to do to try to get grant funding to be able to meet those costs. But street safety, traffic safety is a real focus of ours, and you'll see in the budget that we have a proposed supervisor front. So right now, highways, overseas flood, traffic, and highways itself. We want a dedicated supervisor for flood and traffic, which would make it a lot easier to manage and get everyone where they need to be on a daily basis to meet those traffic safety goals. On the stormwater front, you guys have quite a lot of legislation before you in these coming weeks to get our contracts signed so we can get all those shovels in the ground in 2026. All but two of the stormwater projects throughout the city are bid out. It's been a huge, huge amount of work, and our project management team led by Eileen and with the help of Tom Riley and his engineering firm, they have just done so much work, and the results are really fulfilling. It's great when you talk to somebody who used to stay up all night when it rained that no longer feels they need to stay up all night when it rains, and it's very moving to be able to know that we've helped in some small way. For the new positions, I know you guys have gone through these with the department heads. Again, the highway supervisor, code enforcement, always looking to continue to improve those operations and are very proud of the progress we've made. GIS, all the mapping that you guys have seen us, all the improvements we've been able to make in the police department with that technology, the fire department with their technology. The project manager that would be hired for GIS would continue to be that foundation underneath all of that work. And the chiefs will go into more detail about how technology is helping our public safety departments, but that's a very important piece. And then, of course, now that we'll have the new assets at NAOG, especially the pool, it's really important that we have somebody dedicated to that asset in the city. We'll have four outdoor pools online plus the indoor pool, so that pool operator position, I think, kind of goes without saying that we need that extra help. But a NAOG manager position, in order to be able to continue to make NAOG what people expect and want NAOG to be and what it should be, we really need a dedicated manager to be at that park on a full-time basis. It's, as you know, a huge park with a lot of assets, and we want to be able to take care of it, and we need somebody boots on the ground every single day in that leadership position. And just overall, for the city and where we're headed, there's a lot going on right now. The healthcare landscape remains unclear. Tonight, at the Luzern County Council meeting, there is a motion for a bond to go through for financing. That financing would go for the Wilkes-Barre General Hospital, not for the regional assets up here. It remains unclear what the financing plan is for regional here. So while we certainly would applaud progress on the tenor acquisition of Wilkes-Barre, we want to make sure that we're getting all the information we can for the Scranton property. So we're continuing to work on that. I'm on a weekly call with the governor's team, our state legislators, our foundations, and the Chamber of Commerce, making sure that we're trying to keep each other up to date about what's happening. But I think it's very clear that we all want a deal to go through, we all want to make sure that we preserve that healthcare in the city and that those wonderful folks who are still there taking care of us continue to have their jobs and are continue to be able to feed their families. But nothing on that is certain, so we need to continue to proceed with caution. Generally with business, we continue to try to ease doing business here as best we can. That's little things like another assistant in the code enforcement department helps us do what we need to do on a daily basis for people. And we want businesses to know that they can come to us. We have less funding than we have in previous years to be able to help with mini grants and things like that. Right now, HUD, the Housing and Urban Development Agency, has said that they're not even sending out their $20,25 right now. So we're in a bit of a holding pattern when it comes to some of the grant opportunities we've had before, but we'll certainly keep close to the business community for options there and keep making sure that what we're doing makes it easier for them, which I'll kind of skip down on that note to the City Hall expansion. We have the opportunity to purchase the Fidelity Building next door. The ease of access of that teller area on the first floor, I think, would be a tremendous gift to all of us in the city, anybody who's pursuing a permit or any sort of code enforcement help, being able to have that accessible first floor, I think, would be really, really helpful to them. And Chief Carroll will talk about how it could help the police department with that building next door and this opportunity. It's one of those things that you can sit back and think, we have the financial means to do it now, and we know this building is somewhere we want to stay. We also want to make sure that we have a modern building next door, given this opportunity, so that we can expand. This building is all hallway. It's beautiful, but there's not a lot of office space. We're playing this kind of puzzle Tetris every single time, where we're adding interns in the summertime, or if we were able to add a position like the GIS project manager, it's like, okay, let's hope we get this, and also let's figure out where that person is going to sit. So it would be really important for us to purchase that building for a host of reasons. It's also one of those opportunities that will never come again. I know 10 years from now, if we don't do this, the people on that dais and the people in my seat will probably be upset if they looked back to 2025 and we don't purchase that asset next door to be able to have a real-time crime center, to be able to have a built-in accessible code enforcement department. And purchase a building that also has 35 parking spaces down below it, and we would no longer need to pay for that equivalent number of spaces for our employees across the street. So happy to keep answering questions about that, but it certainly to us is something that we really should take the opportunity to do. The last couple of pieces, just housing affordability remains very much on our minds. And in the same way that we're talking about code enforcement and we're continuing to take down blighted structures and get properties where people can purchase them, or if we have them, we can try to offload them and get housing built. We want to continue to encourage people to either build new or rehab homes, make sure that we have lots of housing that is of every economic level so that people can continue to live affordably in Scranton. We need to keep up the housing supply to keep the costs down as best we can in an environment that is already difficult for folks when it comes to the cost of rent and the cost of buying a home. And lastly, we have an opportunity next summer to be a FIFA activation zone. The World Cup, as you all know, is across the United States. Philadelphia is one of the main locations, and there will be a game in Philadelphia on the Fourth of July. So we and Redding and Pittsburgh are likely, we're hoping, we're very close, we think, to being one of the three activation zones across the state. Would be very, very exciting for the region, very exciting for Scranton and for Lackawanna County. So we think that would be a real boost for us from an economic development. And just a morale perspective, next year, we'll have the 160th anniversary of the City of Scranton, the 250th anniversary of our country, if we also can add on some cool sports, and hopefully with that, maybe even a new soccer pitch somewhere in the city with FIFA. That would be very exciting. So lots of fun things ahead, but of course also concerns that we all have in the broader economy and in healthcare, and we'll continue to be vigilant in trying to do what we can to keep a foundation under us. And with that, I'll send it to Chief Carroll.
Good evening, council. I'm going to do a quick overview of where we are today, and then I'll specifically discuss some of the technology and some of the requests for the budget this year as we move forward. If we look at this, my philosophy as we move forward here, public safety, that's our goal at the top. That's our number one. One's carrying all this brunt, this weight, is our officers, our amazing officers. And there are a couple of things we've done very well, and I'll talk about our successes and our trends moving forward in the next slide. But equipping our officers and making sure that they are trained, they have the proper equipment, technology, their wellness is priority, and their safety. And that's where we've come in, working together in the past, council and supporting this budget, and that line number two there up the top. Policy and supervision, very important, but one of the keys to our success, you'll keep hearing me say this over and over again, is our officers and our community engagement. And our community engagement in the broad spectrum has to do with our law enforcement partners as well as the average citizen, from anybody who calls and is concerned to our CVI program, our partners with social contract as we move forward in working with our community members to maintain peace. Everybody, for the first time in a long time, we're on the same page. And a lot of the community groups, school district, county, the county, the DA's office, and I won't mention any of the other groups because I'm going to forget somebody by name, but we come together and we meet, and it's amazing to see the updates. And as we move forward to the next slide, please, we talk about the trends and how that's been successful for us. All of our efforts in the past three years are really becoming aligned. This is not a comparison. Boy, you can't see that at all. You can see down the bottom, that's the total numbers. This is for this year alone, and what we have is, we've handled over 50,000 incidents already this year. When we do a data analysis, we do a five-year look back. Again, this is just for this brief, that's for what we've seen this past year from January to present. All the efforts we talked about, our community partnerships, our proactive footing by our law enforcement officers, people are sharing information. Our law enforcement partners are sharing information. Today, date, we have the best-trained and best-equipped police department we've ever had in our history, and it's showing, right? So the hard work we've had in the past three years, equipping and training and influence of the technology, and our outreach to the community has helped. Now, the big significance and the one that shocks the conscience much of the time is the homicides. Last year, we had seven of them last year, which was shocking. This year, we are at one. That is not something to celebrate necessarily or get excited about. There's a lot of hard work to be done when we're working with crime. We have to remember that it's an enduring task. We always have to stand, always has to be managed, but we are starting to see the fruits of our efforts in the past three years especially. Our pro-activities I talked about is up, and our two biggest ones are building checks and our field contacts. Those are two of the elements that we use the most. And when we talk about building checks, it's any area that has the attention of the public who brings it to our attention. It's a place where we want to deny criminal element from hanging out. It's a place we need to check to make sure it's secure. So this system, this strategy we've been using has been very successful. Those are up over 125% or 130% change pro-activity-wise. Building checks, field contacts, the beat officers going door-to-door, making sure we're talking to people, hearing what they have to say. And I think as a whole, our society is more in tune to public safety, and they're more willing to step forward. In the, I'm sorry, which woman last?
Excuse me, I just want to say something real.
Go ahead.
The burglary number is staggering. I didn't realize that there's that many burglaries last year.
Well, data in and of itself, we can't gather anything from that total number. That's transparency.
Is that 700? I can't, it's 34?
734.
That's a lot to me. I don't know, is that a lot? It seems like a lot to me. It's staggering to me.
Let's see, so where do you have it? Oh, 124 for burglaries.
What am I looking at, the total?
No, you're on a slant. I did the same thing. The assaults, that's fights, 734.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
That number's a little scary.
No, but keep in mind, anytime you look, now, this is posted, this is right from Pennsylvania's website. We are part of NIBR's National Incident-Based Reporting Systems. We upload our data monthly, so it's full transparency for anybody to look at, and they have tools for comparisons if we want to, but that's where everybody should go to for the accurate information. But a warning, data in and of itself, without analyzing every burglary, we don't know what the cause was, why it is considered a burglary. People have preconceived ideas in their head. However, there's many elements of burglary that would cause a crime to be a burglary. A lot of domestics, for instance, have a burglary charge that goes along with it, okay?
I get it, but you know, to me, as an average person, I think that's like a home invasion. You know what I mean? Where I get a spouse or comes and takes belongings and that's considered a burglary. Just thanks for clarifying that because I need that clarification.
And I have always hesitated about, I put these up, but I know the conversation's going to go long. I don't mind having that conversation, but data in and of itself, it could be a double-edged sword. Okay, next one, please. Okay, I'll touch upon this. Our fleet, I will tell you that this is probably one of the greatest impacts we've ever had in our police department, in our ability to maintain public safety, a boost of morale, applying, putting tools in the officer's hands for them to go out and be proactive and do a good job. We have 54 patrol marked units right now. Of those, there are some special purpose that you see listed to the right, 41 ALPRs that are on the road, the automated license plate readers that are on the road that assist with us in our investigations. Without a doubt, this is an investment that is unprecedented and extremely appreciated, and that has been from the administration and the budgets that we've had in the past and your support. We appreciate that. And it's showing that the investment, and I'll show you again as we move, the investment in our tools and technology is paying off for us and our ability to maintain and keep everybody safe. Okay, another big investment was our Axon Tools, our suite here. We have upgraded our Taser to Taser 10. We have the, I talked about the ALPR, that's the second one on the left in the middle, that's our dash camera. Two big ones, two big additions here is the virtual reality training. In that, you see at the lower left-hand corner, that could be one, that could be multiple officers working together in the same environment, where we are training officers to make decisions under stress without actually being in the field. It's a tool to learn. In addition to use of force training, that also has the ability for the officer to learn how to integrate or interact with somebody from a different culture, or somebody who has autism, or somebody who's deaf. We have those encounters prior to actually engaging somebody who's real in that. And most significant, we also request in the budget, I believe in the IT, and that Body Camera 4, you see the center picture, that Body Camera is a translate option. That translate will detect another language and tell you what language that person is speaking, and you will be able to use your Body Camera 4 as a translation piece in real time while the device is still recording. Should we land this, be successful and land the FIFA zone coming to Scranton, it's going to bring a lot of people, and it's probably going to bring a lot of people who do not speak the English language, where this tool will be very helpful for us. Again, it's a force multiplier that we are extremely excited about. And without a doubt, this technology between the cars and what the officers are wearing right now has greatly enhanced our ability to conduct investigations. All right, our technology platforms, we have many, and this has been, we have started this in 2022, we're landing platforms, we're tying them together, and these are all tools for crime solving and crime prevention. Our Mobile CAD, Tyler, our dispatch, I'll go into a little bit more, but we have the ability to see where our cars are, and then we have the ability to see where all the calls are. And then coupled with camera systems and another platform, ESRI, which are over a record management system, the bottom line is, these are all great tools. We could do better, we could be more efficient in this. They're siloed right now and really require intimate knowledge for each one to operate and for the officers to navigate themselves as we're going forward. But again, we're reaping the rewards of our efforts over the last three years to pull it together, and we're just about there. So as we move forward, and one of the examples is, here's a snapshot, screenshot from ESRI that the city purchased. In ESRI, we have the ability to analyze our data, so we can look for trends, we can frame problems better, we can better target where we want our patrols to be. On the right-hand side there, this happens to be the screen I shot, this is from last week, so we already have 3,000, over 3,000 calls for the month. But you see our building checks, that could be park checks, that could be a house, that could be a specific area, not just for buildings, but that is our number one item that we're doing is checking proactively. Again, traffic stops, traffic control points, welfare checks on people, domestics, those are the higher ones for the month that we are dealing with. But we're able to see those trends and produce and strategize where we want to go. We talked about CAD, this is a snapshot, these are two screenshots. On the right-hand side, you'll see the map, the mapping system. It is difficult to see a lot, and even when it's on and in your screen, but you can see where our offices are, it has them by name, they're in the cars, and the call, you'll see underneath it, welfare check, that's where they're headed, and you can actually see them move across the screen to what the calls they're going on. You can click on the calls and see the notes of it. There's another screen here to the left where it talks about our unit status, who's available, who's not, what part of the, what job they're on. It's a way to monitor the status of active or pending calls, and it's a great supervisory tool in real time. Surveillance cameras, we in the city, we are monitoring over 300 cameras right now, and we're looking to expand that, to create this network where we can monitor more investigative tools for any crimes that do occur. And with that, we have license plate readers on some of these. Uh, and with that, we have license plate readers on some of these, um, locations as well. Problem is, there's so many of them, right? It's, it's part of the platforms I'm talking about, trying to juggle, um, who sits and watches them, like, there's no job just for a camera guy. So how do we tie all this in? If you could, please. Uh, another piece we keep missing is public information, that sharing, many, and sometimes even, um, news agencies telling us information that we might not have known, or us trying to keep the public informed about what's occurring in real time. We could always do better at that, and our goal is to get better at that, but that's one element that we really never think about moving forward as, as a priority. What we did land, and with this, the, uh, the grant that we received last year, um, from Congressman Carwitz, uh, award, this is FUSIS. This kind of brings everything together. On the, on the one mobile CAD, you see the officers in their cars. In this one, you can see when an officer is dismounted by their body cameras. So you see where the car is, you see where the officer is. Officer gets out in a foot pursuit, you can't see them on the CAD anymore. Now you can. We can track them where they're, where they're running to. We have the ability now to go live with their body camera, go live with their, their camera in their car if there's an emergency and they can't talk on the radio, we can bring all the other units in for them in particular. You'll also see we start integrating, it's hard, up by, uh, 5051, there's two cameras. Those are street cameras. If you click on those, it'll bring up the camera feed in this, in this, um, on this platform itself. This is what we need to grow out. This will consolidate a lot of the tools that we do have that are digital and bring it under one roof, technology-wise. Next one, please. And this is, this is a better example of it, what FUSIS is able to do. We're looking at tying in our community cameras. Right now, we're going, we're registering cameras for civilian, um, neighborhoods who want to provide them. It's, it's mapping of where we can go if a crime occurs here, we know, we can call this person and, um, use their camera. They can look at their camera and see if they have anything on there. Tapping into the universities, the, uh, hospitals, city surveillance, uh, the officers and the shopping malls, like, everything comes together as one. And what we're gonna use the technology now to help us solve these crimes and, uh, when they do occur or proactively seek out for crime prevention.
Excuse me, really?
Go ahead.
Maybe it was last year, the year before, um, I, I know all this was being brought forward, and I'm, I'm glad and I'm happy that most of it's been implemented. This is fantastic. I may always support your budget, both budgets. Can't put a price tag on safety, um, but I'm trying to remember, was, was the Ring camera mentioned at all as a tie-in as well, or no? Or, or there's a problem that we can't do that?
For tying in real time, no. But what we do have
But it could be a resource, obviously, right?
Absolutely.
Sharing that data.
It's a great resource.
Okay.
We, we do use that, uh, we could put out
I don't think the public knows that.
We could put out, well, we usually reach out through Ring and put out an alert that something has occurred here, and if you would, share with us, use this link, that works out well for us.
So there's a link that the public could utilize to get you that
Yes, and that could be really for any, any product, Ring's the brand name, but anybody who has them and they have a network, we can, we could jump on those as a request.
Well, I'm, I'm glad that capability is there, I just think the public needs to be more aware of that, the future. I, I don't know how we do that, or that, I'll leave that expertise up to you.
Right, right.
But people will take ownership, they'll take more ownership or more involvement, I think, if it's a, their Ring camera and it's their house
They will. And for just as many people that are out there who want to support us, there's others that, um, are very cautious about us having access or them sharing anything with us technology-wise. That's a real concern.
I also want to make one more comment, because you're, I think you're almost done. The body cam, uh, body can, camera, um, the translator, I wasn't aware of, I think that's fantastic. I think that helps everybody. I think that helps protect the officer first and foremost. It's an evidence, it could be an evidence tool.
It is.
Um, it helps de-escalate, diffuse, you know, because misinterpretation of
Yes.
Different cultures, I get it, and I look to somebody from me to you as nothing, but it could be something terrible to someone from a different culture. So I, I'm glad that, that we have that for, to help with the language barriers. I wasn't aware of that, I'm thrilled to hear that.
Just to be clear, there's a request, um, it's, it's in this budget to fund that for, um, the, for the remainder of the Axon contract, that is an additional cost that I'm seeking this year to add that on.
Oh, so that translator's not in?
We haven't been able to use it yet because of that.
Well, now, now we know that it's, it's a benefit
Yeah, so I appreciate that.
Okay.
Oh, I, I forget, it's, it's many languages.
He told me the one day, how many languages, there was like eight languages or something.
Yeah, I get that.
It's, it's, it's crazy. Anyway, um, so let's bring this, let's bring this all under one roof here, so here's, here's my request here. We talked about, if you look on the right, body camera three, the fleet three, that's the, the, um, dash cameras, you see our community cameras. The rest of this is so important, it comes in under one roof for all investigations, whether they're short-term, a crime that's actually just occurred, we're tracking it down, or if it's a, a longer-term investigation, all this comes into play. So that's our, RMS is our record management system, uh, drone work, we talked about community cameras, NCIC, PennDOT, any public information that comes in, our partners, Code Enforcement, DPW have been very good partners with us in, in these past couple of years, but last year in particular, um, they've been very helpful. Fire and EMS, enduring partners as we move forward. But what we expect, and we never know what, what the event is, so if it's, uh, just a, if it's a purse snatching or it's an assault downtown, somebody is sitting there using the cameras to track this person down, direct other resources in. That could be as big or as small as we need it to be. As we, town, right now, downtown, we, every event that happens, and even be First Friday, we are getting so many people out there, it's amazing, and it's exciting. But also, as the police chief, I need to be able to make, think into the future, be able to do more, especially as our population grows, we need to be able to grow with it, especially technology-wise, we work smarter than harder. As you know, I'll talk about in a second, uh, recruiting police officers is difficult these days. I am looking for a real-time crime center where we could put this under one roof, ideally with the annex of the building next door. This creates the opportunity that the police department seeks for creating such an environment. This environment also is not just computer-based, it is to bring the decision-makers in. So for every entity that's represented, the old-fashioned command post that we establish right now in our building in a conference room that's not built for this, that is not equipped for this, we're making it happen, but we are, it's a painful experience. What I'm telling you is that to create this environment, to have this opportunity right now is a goldmine for us. It could take on whatever look we want it to take on, but it's a common operating picture for everybody listed on the right, bringing in all those feeds, so that everyone is on the same page when we're talking about a, an incident that is, um, spontaneous, or if it's pre-planned, like a St. Patrick's Day parade, or a multi-day FIFA event that's going to bring thousands of people downtown. That is something that I need to make sure that I'm gonna keep all those people safe, and I'm, we're more confident in that, that ability to do it, and our plans can be better supported for that. If you go to the next one, please? So ideally, when that, when that building opens up and we're able to establish a real-time crime center, it also is the opportunity for police administration to be centrally located with the rest of city administration. The clerical staff that is not, um, required for operations in the police department can also go into this building. Right now, our location at South Washington Avenue, we're, we're, we're using every inch of space down there. To optimize space will enhance our operations. Sorenti, we're closing in on our ability, right now, Sorenti is a readiness platform. That's what it is. We have all of our equipment from the police department and fire department that are task force especially, um, emergency response capable. We're going to place our training division up at Colfax with the new, uh, training classroom, and we are going to run supply and logistics out of there, which we're basically doing right now anyway. And then we keep South Washington Avenue for our operations, which include investigations As I said before
So can I just talk a little bit about the command center then?
Sure. Go ahead.
So is this, so you're, you're, so I don't know what you're saying, uh, when, the Sorenti center isn't big enough to have, it's, it's a property we own already, that's not big enough for the command center? Or I thought the command center was gonna be part of the CTC project?
No, no, we, two different missions. Real-time crime center, not a command, you, you could say command post if you'd like, that would be synonymous. Real-time crime center is taking all this information at the speed in which it arrives for decision-making. The, and it's what's happening now. The emergency operations center, I could let the chief talk more about that, but the emergency operations center is not for the real-time crime, police-focused events. That's what we're looking at. To answer your question about Sorenti, no, it is not big enough. We've been into Sorenti, uh, there's room for, there's the classroom, and there's a couple offices off to that. Have you been up there yet, Councilman?
Well, I was up there years ago, I mean
Yeah. But we'll take you up again, so you can take a look at that.
So it's basically a warehouse?
There is nothing big enough for it up there.
So it's a warehouse? It, in a, in a classroom or two, is that what you're saying?
It's a readiness platform and a training environment for the police department. We have a classroom, and we'll show you our Prism, our, we have, uh, another 180, uh, visual screen for, uh, decision-making, use of force, and they, and a room for our, um, personal defense for the officers. But to answer your question, no. And the upgrades for the technology, that is the perfect location for it. Any other questions for a move on to it?
Go ahead, thanks.
Okay. So the bottom line was, what, what is our success? What's the key? And, and it's right here, it's our people, that we've always, always, um, said, we can get as much technology as well we want to, but if we don't have the officers to run it, it's worthless to us, you know? And we always, the officers will do a great job regardless. We add the technology, it works for them, but this is really where, this is the old-fashioned, here's how we meet with the community, we're always out there, we very rarely turn down a request for us to participate in a community event, uh, whether it's reading books. We started the B program, the MPP, we activated that again, this year we're gonna see some bicycles out in the road. Officer Grippo and his dog Scout just graduated from school, they'll be hitting all the community events, they'll be out patrolling the streets. Uh, one point of note is the lower left-hand corner, that is an actual call for, um, a mental health, uh, issue. That is a candid shot taken from a passerby who sent it to me and said, "That's impressive." They were commenting on, on what a good person, how, what a good look that is for the officer who's sitting there having a seat, having a discussion with somebody in crisis. So that, that, that makes me proud right there. Will you go to the next one, please? Okay, so we need more of those people, those good people that sit down and they have a conversation, those people willing to waste their right hand and, uh, they, they want to join a police department. Again, as we know nationally, we have a, a hiring crisis. The police department is taking on a new initiative right now to hire police officers with understanding that we are not lowering our standards for any way, shape, or form just to bring our numbers up. We are looking, those people are out there who want that challenge, who want to become a Scranton police officer, and we're gonna find them, we're gonna hire them. So what we have done, if you see on the right-hand recruiting attention, just a, a quick recap, since 2022, we've hired 31 officers and we've lost 33 officers. We cannot get past that hump, like, we're always just barely, um, filling the void. So this year, uh, we're, before the end of the year, we'll be looking at offering conditional employment to six, so they start the police academy in January. We also initiated a new entry-level test, and then our robust campaign, you'll start to see, especially on social media, our new commercial that was created for recruiting, very well done. Uh, 2026, we have four scheduled to depart, and our key focus for recruiting right now are officers, people who are out there, who are police officers who have the ACT 120 certification, uh, to come aboard the Scranton Police Department, that's our, that's our focus right now as we continue to move, uh, into this year. First, uh, tools, you see a new line item, tools and equipment, non-capital, uh, they're really safety-based. Again, we're gonna bring a lot of people downtown, we need to be able to have some type of management, we're looking at purchasing, um, some fencing that is portable, so we can establish, uh, safety lanes. On the right, up top, it's a ventless, uh, filtration system for officers working with unknown substances, um, so that they, you know, officer's safety, so they don't breathe that material in to their lungs. And then another of the pieces for, uh, funding is, what you see is the range at the bottom, that trap, that's a bullet trap beyond the targets, that needs to be cleaned out every couple of years, we need to get that cleaned out, that was another request in our, um, in our budget. And then we talked about professional services, it was a three-prong, we have the recruiting piece in there, we're looking, it's advertising, for the first time in our history, we have to advertise, and, and this is the norm, I think we, we all need to come to terms with that, is that this is the norm, people try this occupation, they leave, people try police departments, and they keep trying them, and then they end up leaving. It's not like it used to be. So what's realistic is that we'll be satisfied if we hang on to somebody beyond six years, 10 years. It is normal now for people to change jobs, even occupations as we move forward. As we're recruiting now, other police departments are recruiting as well, they're looking for police officers. So it is a, um, it's a great opportunity for, environment for anybody to find the, you know, where they're going to get their bread buttered. And as far as professional services go, the big one is continuing with our consultant, Aspirant. This year, on October 23rd, after a long, uh, a couple of years, we've been at this for quite some time, we received accreditation from the PA Chiefs, their accreditation, um, committee, and that was a big testament to the officer's character and their motivation, their dedication to their occupation, and the great job that they have been doing and, and going through a lot of change with our policies and, and a lot of forms and, but bottom line is, right now, we are recognized by the state. It's a crowning achievement for us, uh, that we are in alignment with all the best practices in the state. And I must note that this is the first time we had, PLEAC, the organization, in its history, had a initial assessment that was flawless, and that's the Scranton Police Department. We are very lucky, uh, we're blessed to have these type of people, and they are gonna continue to do the great work, and what I ask is that we fund, um, Aspirant to continue their partnership. The two biggest elements of our accreditation could not be done without people from outside of the police department. That's the administration and their support, to include counsel in your support, but Aspirant on the other side, they were key to help us navigate that complex, that very complex role of, um, achieving accreditation. So, that concludes my presentation. I'm very proud of our department, very proud of our people, and I seek your continued support to fund the contract or the budget for 2026. Any questions?
Well, just one quick one, I want to report out to Joan, you weren't, I think you left last week when I was reporting out your question regarding, uh, social security being in, as a line item, and that's for the non-uniform people.
Yeah, Matt and I have this stuff.
So, I just want to make you, sure you got your answer.
I'm a little distracted.
Well, that's, you can take that up with him, I'm just reporting out and helping you out there with that answer. Secondly, the bridges, I, I, I know this is an animal, I, I know what we're doing doesn't work, uh, with regards to the trucks that are being stuck under the bridges, especially, I think, uh, coming up Lackawanna Avenue, I, I think, and I, I've, I've sent inquiry and, and made requests through Mr. Waldenberg, uh, what we're doing isn't working, because this is ongoing as long as I'm alive, let alone as long as I'm here. So my understanding is, okay, so there is signage, I don't think it's, obviously it's not working. I think we need to do something better, especially as we come up Lackawanna, because when, once they get to the top, they make the right anyways, and their GPS takes them, thinking, and thinking, and once they realize that, that they made the wrong turn and that bridge is too low, that the GPS tries to send them the Kaiser. Guess what? You can't get the Kaiser Avenue from there. You know that. So, and I just don't understand this day and age, that there's not something, technology that, you know, that would help with that, or do we do better signage, or do we get better at it, or do we find another solution, or are we working on another solution? Because it's, it's almost weekly, it seems like. Maybe not, but it's starting to seem like that. So clarify for me, so the only, and then the railroad, of course, is involved. Now, the only way the railroad is contacted is if there's a police report, correct? If there's an incident like that going under the bridge, or?
I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what you're talking about. The only way, but what we do is every crash that does occur, we contact the railroad just to let them know.
Right.
Because we, we're not going to determine if there's structural damage to their bridge.
Right, well, that's not your expertise, I get that.
So we do always contact them.
But is, are these like repeat offenders? Or I mean, like, it seems to have happened, like, is it the same trucking company? I know, like, some of these businesses that exist up in that part, where these trucks are coming on Main from whatever direction and hitting the, not hitting, but getting stuck under these bridges, they're like weekly deliveries, some of them, I believe, or not. So what's in place if this happens more than once? I mean, they're being cited, correct, right? And pay, and pay whatever the fine is, I don't even know what it is.
Most, for your awareness, most operators will be terminated that day.
I'm sure. The amount of money it costs, that's obvious.
They're, they're not repeat offenders. There's many trucks from outside the area. The signage, I've been told, is, it's PennDOT Road, so the signage that is there is adequate.
Adequate in their eyes, I know.
Has to be a certain size. They did add the flashers, as you saw, the additional markings, and it's still failing, yes?
I know it's, it's by their direction, but I just think maybe we need to have a conversation with them, because they're not here every day.
If I could add, our city engineer has had a conversation with PennDOT, and they have agreed to add additional signage further away from the bridges, so.
Or prior, yeah.
The expressway. The, the other point that PennDOT has pointed out to us, so there's two different types of GPS. There's a commercial-grade GPS and the GPS that all of us would have. Sometimes people work on the cheap with using the regular GPS that does not alert them to the fact that there's bridges are there or roads are there. So, you know, that is an issue that's been ongoing, and PennDOT's aware of it.
Well, I'm glad there's a discussion being had, because it's, I mean, everybody knows it's not working, so we need to do better. I'm not saying we have to do better, but we have to find a way to make it better.
Right, and, and PennDOT is trying, they understand that there is a problem.
All right, well, thank you.
Do we know if the commercial GPS is mandatory for, this is a general question, but maybe that's, maybe we could talk to our state legislators about making that mandatory or beefing up the fines at the state level for not having that commercial grade.
Right, that's a good point.
Well, thank you.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for having us tonight. I think this is now the sixth budget I've presented to you, and, you know, I was thinking about it today, the years go by so fast, but during this time, when we're starting to put it together, I'm able to take a moment and, and kind of look back and reflect on, you know, the strong work that the members in the Scranton Fire Department had done all year. They're really the ones who drive all these initiatives that we bring for you, to you, for you to support home. So it's, it's always a moment of pride for me, specifically in being a member of this department for 24 years, to look and see how much work they really did throughout the course of the year. So with that, I'll go over a couple different points from this year's budget and talk about some of the initiatives that we drove home this year. The only change that I'll bring to your attention in our current organizational chart and structure is I'm putting in for another fire inspector this year. It's not increasing the overall budget, or excuse me, personnel within our department, but it's taking one firefighter from the floor and putting, putting that person into the inspectors, fire inspectors role. That will give us four in that office. I think, and we've had these conversations multiple times over the years, is we're really about moving forward in a proactive stance here. The fires that we never have to go to are the ones that save the taxpayers the most money. Decreased liability for workers' comp, the obvious benefits, obviously, the people who sustained damage in their home from a fire or life, yes, we want to prevent those. So we'll talk about some of those strong initiatives we've done, and a lot of that work comes out of the fire inspector's office. They're working with code enforcement on a regular basis, they work with their project management team on a bunch of different initiatives as well. They work with the mayor's office and her, her personnel as well on a lot of community outreach projects, and, and it's really about driving that proactive focus home. And that's the reason we're putting in for that other inspector this year. And like I said, it does not increase the overall budgeted number, it's just reallocating one of those assets over into the proactive arena for the department. So just some of the highlights from 2025 Community Impact. Right now, we're at about 3,235 calls for service this year. That's typical of where we usually stand, if you look at the trending over the last several years. 1,275 community outreach hours, that's, that's where we're out there doing proactive engagement with the community. Fire extinguisher training, fire safety education lectures. 516 commercial life safety inspections already this year, and that's up 72% from last year. We did 300 last year. 272 residents that receive free smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, and I don't want to just gloss over this one here. We've moved, a couple of years ago, and we talked about it, from just putting out social media, hey, if you want a smoke detector, give the fire department a call, and we'll come out. We moved to a really proactive stance, where now we're detailing our members on a Saturday and a Sunday, separate and apart from riding on the back of the truck, we're putting out a group of firefighters to go out and knock on doors and with smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors in hand, go right in the house and install them. The single biggest thing we could do as a community to drive down fires and fatalities in fires is having homes with smoke detectors in them. And we're going to continue to do that trend. We've been, you know, OECD has supported us with funds over the years. We now have a sign board that we will put that out as well into the community, alerting people, hey, we're going to be in this section of the city this week, weekend, to come out and put smoke detectors in. And we still get some trickle in of people just calling and asking for them, but we're out there proactively, and our goal, my goal, is to have a smoke detector in every house in, in the city of Scranton. I know it's a lofty goal, but we're going to continue to push that forward. And we're using GIS to help us track that as well. We have a platform where we're able to see, and in 10 years from now, we're able to, going to be able to go back and go, hey, the 10-year smoke detectors are at the end of their life cycle, whether that's putting a mailing out, or whether that's detailing our members to go out there, hey, we gotta, we're going to change these smoke detectors out for you. So that's really, that's a big deal. If you remember years ago, we put HOZ devices in every fire apparatus, that way on your phone, your navigation, you'll be alerted when we're operating on a scene, it sends a signal to your phone. We're approaching 200,000 vehicles have been alerted to our members working in roadways or working in emergency incident scenes since we implemented that. It's about 40,000 already this year. Building fires, we're at about 54 building fires for the year, 4,971 citizens who received fire safety education, and our members have put in about 9,272 hours of professional development hours. And those are all great statistics to look at, but it's also, we're, we're going, hey, what did we do last year? What, where do we got to fill those gaps for the next year? So, next slide, please. So some of our initiatives, it's really been about community focus, so on the emergency management end, our mass alerting system. So the city of Scranton is now, I believe we are the only municipality in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania at a municipal level, other than a county, that could put out emergency alerts, like, that you get on your phone. We have what's called a COG from the IPAS, which is run by the federal government, the Integrated Public Safety Awareness Messaging System. Also, our flood plane and levee evaluation, the SQRA is marching forward. And I think I've, we've given you a little bit of an update on that, but of the three levee systems that we were doing this semi-qualitative risk assessment on, our goal was to get them certified, so that the people that are living in those special flood hazard areas wouldn't have to have flood insurance anymore, that this is now a certified levee. It was a lofty goal, should have been done decades ago when these levees were completed, and for some reason that work did not happen. With the administration support, we were, been doing that a little over a year now, it looks like one of our levee systems is actually going to get certified. So we're actively working on that with our emergency management specialists right now, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the project management team, which, that's going to be great for those people that live in that area. And then we'll have good data to determine what we need to do to get those other two levees certified. So right now, it looks like we'll be leaning towards having the plots levee certified, if that, everything goes well through FEMA and all the data from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. So we're really excited about that. The Comprehensive Emergency Plan, we continue to work on that document, that's a living document that our emergency management specialist continues to work on. Our operation focus, we will be implementing the quick response implementation come the first of the year, where our members will be going out on those critical EMS calls, those life-changing calls where somebody may be experiencing cardiac arrest, overdoses, pregnancies. We'll be going out there to start that emergency care before the ambulances are able to get there or be able to work with those ambulances. If you saw earlier this year, we also were certified as a Swift Water Rescue Team typing through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and PEMA. That was also with the Office of the State Fire Commissioner, Pennsylvania Fish and Boat, and also EMS. So four entities overseeing that did the study, or excuse me, did the evaluation of our personnel, and we were able to get certified as a Swift Water Emergency Response Team. We're constantly integrating the technology initiatives that we've brought before you over the years. A lot of those are coming to completion now. Our infrastructure focus, we'll talk a little bit on that. Emergency Operations Center, like Councilman McCandry alluded to, up at Career Technology Center, we'll give you a little bit of an update on where that is with the training facility. And then also, we talk about this on a regular basis, I know I always harp on this with council, is we're always trying to save seconds. And our station alerting upgrades are almost complete, we've been beta-testing some of it, they're up and running at all of the stations. But now, when a dispatcher up at comm center marks a call ready for dispatch, if the dispatcher's actually busy putting a police call out or an EMS call, as soon as they mark that ready for dispatch, it's being transmitted to our stations. And I think there's another unique opportunity that those vendors are looking for as well. If you know, fire alarm system will take the Hotel German, for instance. Fire alarm gets transmitted there, or somebody pulls a fire alarm, it gets sent to a central station, that processing time usually takes about two minutes, gets sent to comm center, that could take up to two minutes to process the call, and then they're putting it out. So four to five minutes after that, let's say it was a smoke detector that went off, and it was an incipient fire that had started, it's four or five minutes, we're already behind the eight ball before we're out the door. What these systems are now being able to do is transmit that right to our station alerting system as it's being transmitted to comm center as well. So now we're going to get address that there's a fire alarm going off there, our folks can be out the door and ready and, and starting there four to five minutes earlier, which can mean the difference between holding a fire to a single room and contents, or, you know, depending on the level of the fire, it could be, you know, a couple rooms, it could be a couple apartments in a, in a building. So those are all great technology initiatives that this system will be able to do as these things come online as well. Our wellness focus, we continue to make sure that our members are well, implementing our 1580 physicals, we'll talk about that in our mental health wellness app. Last year alone, or excuse me, this year, we've had 5,000 hours, which equates to about 208 days of lost time due to injuries. Now, we've been able to get some of that back through modified duty, where we're able to bring in our members, who may not be able to ride on the truck, but they're able to help us with some substantial work, like a lot of these initiatives. So 3,285 of those hours, not of those hours, but 3,285 additional hours, we've been able to bring in members on modified duty who are not able to actually work because of some injury maybe they sustained while on the job. Our organizational focus, very similar to the Police Department, maintaining our fleet, maintaining our equipment, giving our members the tools and equipment they need to be able to do their job. And that's been, I think, in, in, in the six years that I've been the chief, and in the 24 years I've been with this department, the last six years has been an incredible investment in the tools and equipment that our members have. You know, investing in them, not just the tools and equipment, but also their level of training, is going to ultimately keep them safer. Our goal at the end of the day is really to get them to retirement and let them enjoy a healthy and happy retirement for, you know, all the good work that they do here in the city. And then, similar to what the police did, we did a recruitment campaign. We're in the middle of that right now. We just did the physical agility assessment this weekend. I could tell you, in 2023, I believe, we had just shy of 100 applicants. We were able to increase that to about 142 applicants this time around. We're weeding through that list now, the physical agility test has been completed. We will be doing the oral exams this weekend on Sunday, and then the civil service will be certifying that list. The Recruit Academy is slated to start January 22nd or 23rd, I believe. Right now, we're probably, we are sitting at about six vacancies, planned vacancies. We believe that could be upwards of eight or 10 by the time the academy rolls around, and that'll, excuse me, require us to hire eight or 10 folks for the January 22nd academy. We talked about the Smoke Detector Blitz Program, the prevention education equipment that we've rolled out, and then also our record management system, where we're able to leverage a lot of that information. And I gave you a sheet up there from our fire stats, who does a lot of our, looking at our data and kind of digesting it for us in a small form. I gave it to you, I know it's not in great form, but you have a copy of it up there. And this is just some of that community focus, this is that mass alerting system, this was our emergency management specialist, some of our senior leadership down in Washington, D.C., meeting with the IPAS lab, so that we're able to put out these emergency alerts. Currently, right now, we're that backup for the county, if for some reason they're not able to get it out countywide, we're able to put out those wireless emergency alerts and, you know, stuff over TV, stuff over weather band radios as well. And, and there you'll see on the bottom, that's, you know, part of the plot levee system. You could see the new bridge going over Parker Street down there as well, but the people that are behind that special flood hazard area, the hope is if we get that levee certified, they will not be required to carry flood insurance on a federally backed mortgage. So that's the hope. And then on the left-hand side, that's our emergency operations plan, it continues to be in constant revision, and our emergency management specialist, Ryan Monroe, is really tasked with making sure that we update that. That had not been updated in quite some time before we started to bring that emergency management specialist on board. Next slide, please. Infrastructure focus, this is just some conceptual work that we've already done regarding the Emergency Operations Center at the Career Technology Center. So the first one, kind of in the center of the page, is a, is a master plan of the whole facility. This is going to take a lot of funding and a lot of time, it's going to be over a number of different years, a lot of initiatives are going to have to happen for this to come to fruition. It's, it's right now just a, I will call it a dream and a wish, but it's what's needed in this city, especially a city this size, so that our emergency, or excuse me, our emergency services have a proper trace, place to train their members with initial training and also proficiency-based training. And that's a conceptual drawing up top of the Emergency Operations Center. We continue to work with our partner, H2M, who is our architect and engineering firm on this, and we continue to do that. And on the bottom right, that's a picture of what the firefighters see inside the firehouse now, on multiple different screens. When a call comes in, when that dispatcher marks it ready for dispatch, it might not even be coming over the radio yet, but they're getting it on the TV. even be coming over the radio yet, uh, but they're getting it on the TVs in the station and our folks are moving down to the apparatus to get out the door and go mitigate whatever incident has been placed on that board. Uh, next slide. This is our NFPA 1580 wellness initiative. So this year we had 87 of our members. And if you're not familiar, the contract in 2015 required any member hired after 2015 to submit to an annual fifth for duty physical under the National Fire Protection Association 1580, um, guidelines. It was 1582 now, but it's been, um, merged into the 1580 standard. And it's a, really a comprehensive exam and we're working with frontline mobile health and we have been for the last three years. Their contract was just renewed for two more years. Now it's just not the people that were hired after 2015 by contract, they're mandated to do it, but we allow any of our members to go through the cancer screening, the, uh, heart-based screening and a comprehensive medical exam with the, the labs, um, to make sure that they're healthy. And this will pay for itself immediately and it probably already has. If we're able to detect stuff well in advance, get that treatment before we're, you know, treating something that is, uh, very progressed. So this is going to eventually help drive our healthcare costs down. It's going to, the primary benefit is it's going to have a, a safe and a healthy workforce, but it's going to drive our healthcare benefits down. Um, that's the hope and also hopefully our, uh, service-related and non-service-related disability pensions. And you can see on the right-hand side, that was just a picture of the gym equipment. We have annually worked with the union and dedicated money to making sure that we have physical fitness equipment at the fire stations. That is the picture at fire headquarters. We continue to, uh, upgrade the equipment there, work with their committee, support that every year. There is money again in the budget next year to make sure that they have those tools to make sure that they're able to carry out their job. Next slide please. That's, uh, top left-hand corner, just a picture of, uh, our water rescue assets and our technical rescue equipment, like Chief Carroll alluded to. This is a lot of the stuff that is kept up at Sirente Center. This is kind of our mobilization point when we need to go out the door for anything specialized. I don't know if you saw recently on social media, a lot of our members were involved in a mine safety operation, um, of, um, drill not too far from here, but it's part of our region and that's, uh, our members are part of that. Also those, uh, boats that are up there, that's part of that water rescue asset that we now have and, uh, the members that we have trained in that do a phenomenal job in making sure that if we do have another flooding event, we're able to save lives. And, and it's really the local responders who are going to save lives. There's big teams that come in. I've been deployed all over the, the country unfortunately to massive hurricane events, but it's the local responders who are actually going to save lives. And then the other two pictures there, uh, it may be difficult for you to see, but one of the things that we implemented was purchasing four drones and our inspectors run those drones. Those are two fire scenes. If you know anything about, you know, uh, if you've seen us out there fighting fires, one of the things that is difficult for us a lot of times is if you're, if you're in a room, everybody thinks about a room as having four sides, right? It's actually six sides. It's, you know, we're looking at the ceiling, we're looking at the, the basement as well. This is giving us a look into the ceiling, a bird's eye view for the incident commander to start making, um, sound determinations, um, whether he's going to evacuate the structure or where he's going to put his, uh, interior personnel to start to be able to put this, this fire out. We've also used it for lost people as well, but you could see the one on the left-hand side there. It's got thermal imaging capabilities. So now we're able to see where the fire is traveling inside that structure, especially if it's up in the, the roof line, we're able to, to stop that fire in its track. It's given our incident commanders a unique viewpoint that they have never had before. So it's been a great tool and we're continued, continuing to strengthen our resolve with that and making sure that our, our inspectors and our emergency management specialist is trained in it as well. He has mapping platform on his, uh, drone so that if we do have another event like September of 2023, we're able to start mapping the damages and while we're doing the damage assessments as well. Uh, next slide please. So really it's about, uh, that organizational focus, uh, bringing everything together from, you know, last year, that fleet upgrade. If you look up top, that's a, you know, drawing of the two new engines. We placed, uh, an order for in March of this year. Uh, that's going to be engine two, which will replace the engine in south side. And then that's also engine 10, which engine, this will be the first time that, uh, engine 10 has ever had a, a new fire truck. It's always had a hand me down from somewhere. So, uh, we've committed, this administration has committed to making sure that we have the right equipment to be able to go out there and do the job when our members get called. That bottom left-hand picture is part of our social media campaign that we really were able to drive some people from outside the area to the city, and that's kind of what we're trying to do. Um, you know, we want people in the city to be able to have these jobs as well, but we want to, as the, as the numbers have gone down over the years, we've had to kind of broaden our reach and we, we saw in this tests especially, we had people from Colorado, California, South Carolina, New York, Maryland, all over the country taking our tests. And some of them actually did come in and take the physical agility assessment. So we are, our message is getting out there. And then, um, inventory management, that's really what we're going to be focusing on next year is really making sure that we have a good handle on what that inventory management looks like. When you look at that engine up there, that engine before I even put one piece of equipment on it is costing us $1,072,000. And then all the equipment that goes on, on that engine, uh, our, our most expensive piece of equipment and our, our, our best piece of equipment we put on there is our personnel. So having those trucks that are designed to the newest standard for safety reasons is, is vital as well. So they've become similar to what the police cars have been, become, they've been, become these little technology hubs as well. Uh, you know, we have CAD, um, the computer aided dispatch in there, computers where the officers are able to see notes as comm centers, uh, typing them in if they're getting multiple calls, is there somebody trapped on the second floor? So they're able to see that in real time as they're responding there. They're able to make decisions based on where the best hydrants are. Would you rather grab a 12-inch main hydrant or an eight-inch main hydrant? Maybe it's just the difference of going an extra half a block and grabbing the 12-inch, uh, main. So our members are now able to see that and leverage that, that technology. So that's really important. Next please. Uh, this is a, you know, once again part and parcel to, um, having more people in the fire inspection division. If you look on the top left-hand side, that's our fire prevention officer and I believe one of our fire inspectors, working with the Red Cross did a, uh, blitz for smoke detector installations and we worked with them, directly with them. This is two of our inspectors showing city hall folks how to operate fire extinguishers and put out incipient fires to make sure that our personnel here at city hall are safe. And then up top, that's a stop the bleed kit. And I don't know, uh, if you've seen these, but what we did is we worked with, um, DPW, uh, Pat Kuzick to make sure that the members down at DPW, those orange boxes, every piece of equipment down at, uh, DPW has one of those stop the bleed kits in them. We know that they work in a dangerous setting, very similar to what police and fire do. We can, you know, they're part of the emergency services here for the city of Scranton. And, uh, our members, our paramedics who are, and a couple of our paramedics are fire inspectors, they went down and taught them the skills. It's not like, hey, here's the box, good luck. Uh, we wanted to make sure that they knew how to help each other and save each other down there. And I think that's part of, um, the city's vision and this mayor's vision has been over the years, getting rid of the siloing and, and it, it really does happen here.
I have one in my classroom, so I.
Yeah, they're great. Yep. Um, and then, uh, that smoke detector blitz program, which I talked about, the prevention education equipment, which we continue to invest in here at the city of Scranton and in the fire department, and then leveraging our records management system to be able to make informed decisions. And, and a lot of stuff is really coming together and it's great to see it as you look back over the year and, um, you know, uh, see the strong work that's been done in a lot of the departments and it gives us the time to be able to reflect. Uh, next one. This is just, and you guys already have this, the budget for the year. And if you have questions specifically on any of the line items, on why any of them would in, are increased by a certain amount, I'd be more than happy to, to, to speak to those, but that's the fire budget. I think the next one is the salary line item budget. And then the last one is, um, the capital budget. And I gave you all hard copies of those, but I'm happy to answer any questions related to them. Once again, I just want to, uh, thank you for your continued support. You know, I know sometimes we might seem like the good idea fairies, bringing you all these ideas and technologies and stuff, but, um, they really do mean something. And I think at the end of the day, um, seeing the impact they have on the safety of community is, is vital. And, uh, like Councilman McCandrew said earlier, you really can't put a price tag on that. I know we do when we come here and we have to be mindful of that. We are mindful of that. We understand that we don't have an endless budget here, but we appreciate the support that council has given us and I appreciate the work that, um, some of you have been sitting there the whole time. I've been sitting as the chief, um, I appreciate the support that you've had for our department and look forward to any questions and look forward to your continued support in 2026 to make sure that we're able to keep the city safe. Thank you.
My only comment is, uh, over the years, um, the police and fire budgets are pretty straightforward. They're common sense, uh, investments that we've made to those departments and, and no real questions on the budgets, they haven't changed that much, um, both police and fire. Um, when it comes to the certification of the levy system, what, do you know what the timeline is on the, on the plot section and then timelines on the other two sections?
Yes.
That's very good news to hear.
Yeah, so the other two sections, I'm not exactly sure how we're going to get to that part, but it's still going through the U S Army Corps of Engineers assessment, which we're engaged in on a regular basis, but there, after they make that recommendation, there's going to be a substantial amount of work that we have to do our, on our end. It did not help our timeline with the fact that the federal government was shut down for several weeks and we weren't able to talk to FEMA regarding what those requirements need to be and also the state as well. Um, so we are working diligently with that. The emergency management specialist I talked about, he's new to the city because our, our previous one who was fantastic and, and Ryan, our new one is fantastic as well. Um, that's, he's been given the directive, that's the priority. Uh, whatever we need to do to get that certif- certified, that's what we're moving forward with doing. There's a lot of requirements that we'll have to do after we're finished with the S Q R A, but working with Tom Riley, who I don't know how he's able to do what he does. I'm actually think there's probably, and I know the mayor said this, I don't think there's one of him, there's probably four or five of him. Also Joey Sedita, we've been working closely with him and, uh, Morgan Fetzak's been a, um, something special that the city has here to be able to help us with a lot of these projects. So I will keep you posted as we're going forward, but it is a definite priority, um, for us to move in that direction and then have FEMA agree with the Army Corps' assessment to certify that levy.
Yeah. Is, is that going to be a couple month process or is it going to be?
It's going to be sometime next year, I would think.
All right, thank you.
So how many, like if this, you know, once this is certified, how many houses would be, would be relieved of having to purchase flood insurance? Is that a lot? Is it 10 houses? Is it 50? I don't know.
No, the, uh, the city, uh, Don King is the flood plane management coordinator and he has access to the list of how many, um, uh, policies, national flood protection policies are in force. Uh, we could definitely find that out for you, but it'd be any of the houses down there. Might not be today, but right now, if you go down there and buy a house and you're in a, a special flood hazard area and you have a federally backed mortgage, you're required to purchase flood insurance. And I don't want to get into weeds too much, but under risk rating 2.0, which went in a couple of years ago, those, those flood insurance rates went up dramatically.
Can't imagine.
Um, so, you know, is it always a good idea to have it if you can afford it? Yes, I would encourage anybody who lives down there, even though you're behind a certified protected, um, flood barrier and structure, it's just good practice to have that insurance. But sometimes people can't afford that and I get that. Now they won't be required to actually have it.
Would it be a good argument, once certified, if you do want it, the rates should be reduced? You should be able to petition that as a homeowner.
Yeah, I think at that point they would get it through a private vendor and maybe not necessarily through the NFIP. I think the NFIP, you have to be in a, what's considered a special flood hazard area and, and I don't want to talk too much out of school because I do know a lot about it, but I am not the expert. Uh, Don King is definitely the expert and I'm going to make, uh, Ryan Monroe the other expert, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you everyone for being here, for some of this information on, on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.